My name's Bentley Gary, I'm here to present 2020th Street. It's a new home in replacement of an existing home on a non-conforming lot. The lot is non-conforming due to lot size, which is 4,835 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. It's also due to fridge where it has 70 feet and 125 feet is required. It's located in the Plum Island Overlake District, and we're requesting a special permit finding under section 97-4D to increase the height of the existing home. So the plan is to replace an existing four-bedroom home with a three-bedroom home that is moved slightly away from the water to meet all four setbacks of the lot and come into compliance. We've actually made the lot coverage and the FAR better than what's existing. The lot coverage is 20.2 right now. We're going down to 19.9 where 20 is required, which is, it's 981 square feet now, we're going to 937. The FAR right now is .304. We're dropping down to .286 where .25 is required, which is, existing is 1470 square feet and we're going down to 1383. The height of the home is currently 20.33. We are going up to 31 feet due to the floodplain, but we are below the 35-foot height max. And I can go through, so this is the 3D rendering I showed last time.
I just have one question.
Yep, sure.
Everything you're presenting tonight is the same that we had?
Yep.
Last time, there's no change?
Yeah, no. Yeah, I just have my architect put on his title lock.
Yep.
So, same home, you've seen it before. It's roughly the same square box, it just has decks in the front. Elevation's kind of the same thing, you can see all four sides, but roughly the same square box as the existing home. This is the FAR plan of the existing home, which shows 897 square feet on the first floor and 600 square feet on the second floor, which I highlighted. And this is the proposed, which shows 691 and a half square feet on both floors. The lower deck will have to be open boards and have no rubber roof to kind of keep it open so it can never be finished. You know, to kind of sort of that. I did include the floor plans, which I didn't have last time, but then was requested. You know, it's pretty similar, open floor plan, but it's the same as the FAR plans. Basically, two and a half bathrooms, three bedrooms, open floor plan. And as I explained last time, this is just the lot size. You can see in green where the existing home is and where we shifted it down in between the sightlines. So we try to stay in between the existing views of the immediate neighbors and try to, some of them got better, but none of them got worse in terms of plan. So, in terms of that, where we press the increase in height.
So do we have a copy of the plan that has the correct information?
Yep.
I don't, we've questioned him enough, no further questions.
You want to hear directly?
No, just in terms of reviewing the documentation, that the FAR is .286. And what was there and all that stuff.
It doesn't plus, and what was the difference?
It's less, but it's still .28. Just something that you flag in terms of looking at it.
Alright, so anybody here have any new questions?
Can we possibly see?
Yep, sure. Which part?
I got a few.
You can come up and look, you don't have a set there, so you can close the door if you want.
So that's the, it's the same kind of plan as last time. The only thing I added really was the floor plan, if you want to see them.
How far away from the water are you moving the house back?
Uh, it's about the sun porch. I mean, give or take 10 to 12 feet. It's almost like, so you can see this is the little bump up for the existing sun porch. We're pretty much moving the house back to the front wall of that, so it's about...
And how about this side of the house, is that moving at all or is that staying?
Yeah, a little bit, we're right in line kind of where the deck is. So the existing deck goes to pretty much the same line as where we moved the house back to, but we had to, I guess with the new, the Overlake District, you actually do have to meet all the setbacks. You can't be, we had a couple non-conforming, like right here. It was like four feet from the lot line. So we can't, we couldn't leave it as four feet, I guess, so. So we did take, try to take into account where we shifted it, because I think I could have gone this way a little bit, I could have gone. So we tried to shift it kind of within that sight field, just directly away from the water.
And how much higher is it going to be than it actually is now?
It's about 10 feet. It's pretty much, you know, right now the ceilings are low and it's right down.
I've been there, I've seen it.
So it's, we had to go up on pilings.
What are these lines indicating?
So those are just, I tried to, it's just sightlines. So basically, right now, this person's view kind of between that house and the existing house is that sightline. This person's view right now is between the existing house and, you know, this is wherever is over here. So I kind of tried to show existing sightlines, you know, this one has a pretty broad view to show that we didn't, you know, we didn't move it this way, which this sightline would have got worse. We moved, okay, yeah, so if I moved it this way, I'm sure you'd be angry because then I'm cutting off the water. So we tried to just go straight back within this channel, you know? So at least it didn't impede, I guess, left to right on any immediate use. Yep, yep, so that's the...
Does anybody else have new questions? Nothing that we talked about in the last two meetings, hopefully?
Is there anything, so you never get them in the last two meetings? Because we came to several prior to that.
Well, he started two meetings ago, I think, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that was the first, yeah.
So, what we asked him to do was correct the, there was two different names on the plot plan, so we needed to correct that, and he needed drawings to scale it.
Yep, and they actually, I mean, it doesn't matter, but my architect did check on it, he thought they were, but he's like, "Don't worry about it." He's like, "I'll throw it on my title lock, I'll stamp that they are now." But, yeah, I know that was a mistake, though.
For sure.
If you're over here, I mean realistically, this is kind of like, we wouldn't impede anymore.
No, you don't need to, my water being, the height is what I'm, it's very different than the other houses.
Yeah, I think we're pretty similar to this one, because this one has an apartment underneath and then it goes up two stories too.
It's not, it's not a car, that's hundreds.
Yeah.
That's David's house he's talking about.
Yeah.
No.
Do you think you're going to be, you're going to be higher up in the house?
I don't think so, this is a three, this is a full three-story house. They actually have an apartment on the first floor.
It's a basement apartment.
Yeah.
It's not a, and not on pilings.
But that, my pilings are, they're basement apartment roughly, so. It's, because it's sitting on the break, but, so I need just a reference, we're pretty similar.
Okay, is there anything else you want to ask, or can we move on?
I just didn't get their names for the record. Could I get your names for the record?
Elizabeth DeGrenier.
And Mary Lou Colburn. Okay, thank you.
Are you satisfied?
I guess.
Well, at least you know what it is, correct?
I have more questions for the applicant.
I have other questions.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the finding for the proposed new plans that the the new plans meet front yard, side rear yard setbacks, the height and the lot coverage for the BIOD, and that on the grounds that the FAR substantially improved that the proposed is not more detrimental to the existing neighborhood.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passes.
Alright, thank you very much. Yeah, 21 days, and then it starts when you guys write. Cool, thank you.
So we have the old hotel, Brian and Bryn and Jeffrey next?
Could I just ask you all to just try not to talk while we're conducting the hearing? Please, thank you.
I think that's just...
That's actually much better.
Yeah, that is better, because that was about three feet. Yes, yes.
Actually, it was 5.2.
Oh, there it is.
It was 5.2.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep. Basically, in summary, you asked us to go back and redo the calculations for it, and then you were also waiting on the judgment rules in regards to positioning of the house and whether we'd be able to be grandfathered for it. So we went back and we measured things, we did all the calculations and spent a lot of time putting all together, and I think we came up with more clean and clear numbers that everybody can understand, and I also put together another sheet that had individual building calculations so that you can see where the numbers were coming from.
So you realize none of us have seen this?
No, I understand, I understand.
Doesn't make it easy for us.
No, I understand, and I apologize for that. It just, it took a lot of extra time and energy to go out there, redo things and recalculate everything over time. But nonetheless, in summary of what's going on, when it comes to the setbacks on the property, we're taking this house, this structure here. It was a 7.3 setback on this side, we're pushing it to 10 to make it conform. And on this side, it was actually, previously, the house was at 5.2 and we're pushing it back to the 8.5. The deck that was on the previous existing structure was actually touching the property line. So now it's going to be pretty deep between the deck and the property line. And then, so, that's basically, so then when it comes to the lot coverage and FAR, we actually went down, where is it? We went down on the lot coverage, only a couple hundreds of a point, or a couple tenths of a point, but nonetheless, we still went down on the lot coverage, so we increased it. We went up on the floor of the living space, but we went down on the deck space. So the lot coverage, it went down. And then...
Still under 25%.
But, no, not the lot coverage, the FAR is, FAR went up about a tenth of a point, but it's still under the 25%. So overall, on the project, we, you know, we went down on the lot coverage, we went, we kept underneath the 25, well underneath the 25 FAR. We increased the setback from 5.2, I mean, from 5.2 to 8.5, and the other setback to 10 feet. From 5.2 to 10 feet, so.
I might add, you know, it's the impact on the site, it's a one-bedroom house. Pretty small for being, we're just taking this one couple of there. It gets us up to the roof and that's pretty much the only structure there. So we tried to make its impact.
So do we have plans?
Yeah, the plans haven't changed since the beginning.
It was just the numbers and the calculations, so it needs to progress.
So everything, and everything that we saw in the plans last meeting, and then, then we seem fine with, as there were any questions or concerns about it.
Yes, it's really just comparing what he's done with the plan, if you see fit, that's all.
And then, you know, the ridge height is well underneath the 35 feet. The mean ridge, the main height, the mean height. The mean height isn't 28.10.
Yes. The rear setback is eight and a half feet to the building, but it's still only three feet to the deck, right?
Correct.
And that's what counts, that's what counts the depth.
Okay.
It's within the...
Previously, the deck was touching the property.
I get it, you've made it better, but this should really be three feet.
Okay.
Is that, is that new?
Yes, that's on the new one, Doug?
That's on the new one, the new one is three foot to the deck and eight foot five to the structure itself. Before, now, can I assume that you did not count the deck on your existing?
On the existing structure on above.
So you did the same thing with the existing structure that you did with this one?
So did you have more than the one copy of the application?
This one, I gave Eric one.
Okay.
And I have slid it down so that Doug has the... We have one complete copy amongst us, right?
I get the figures, but not the, well, I've got this, that's what you did.
We need to...
That's the sight, like, so this is, this is the new before us here.
While Eric's looking over the numbers, is there any comments, questions that we haven't heard before?
Eric, what are the things? This is supposed to be zero, not 5.2. And so zero goes to three, instead of 5.2 to 8.5. And the one below it goes to three.
That's to the deck, not the structure.
Is the structure there now?
No.
No.
It was lost due to a natural disaster.
Was that? And what disaster was it?
I think it was a hurricane or a windstorm that did the whole thing up off the foundation, so.
If you have more questions, just keep going.
Yeah, I mean, this is a non-conforming use, or commercial use. So there's three dwellings on one lot. So, we don't allow three dwellings on one lot.
But they were...
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Okay.
And so isn't, so isn't the use pre-existing, non-conforming?
And this is titled how that if this is done and that it's sold, then you've got three separate units being divided up, it can't be done?
I think the only, the only way you'd be eligible for three units in three lots would be if those three houses were on their prior zoning. And I don't know the history on that.
But you still can't have a small...
If you split them...
You can't have a small lot, you can't, with lots, 7,000 square feet, you can't have less than five.
Well, if you split them and you make them most conforming, you can't do it.
Correct.
If you have multiple homes on one lot that predated zoning, it doesn't matter how non-conforming the lots will be afterwards, you'll be eligible for a lot. Whether you have no furniture, whether you don't, no matter what the deficiency is.
Okay, so if the, if the structure was there, and the structure is no longer there, and what's right, do they have to put the structure back?
With a finding from this board, they can put the structure back.
Because of the...
Natural disaster.
There is a time...
Is what they're hoping we decide.
I understand that, I just don't want to create something that's not...
If you're, if you're, if you're drilling at the timeframe, timeframe's two years.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that if, you know, just because we give approval to something that has a finding that improves the neighborhood in terms of its condition, does it make it a salable lot by means of what's on it in terms of its use to a new use or changing use? Someone would have to come back to us to change it, right?
Yeah, if you want, any use change on Plum Island requires the zoning board. Well, unless you go into a conforming use, if you're going to go to a single-family home and you're not increasing the height, and you're not increasing, you know, there's a lot of other buts.
That's the thing that triggered this whole scenario, is that we're changing the height on the structure because we have to put up on pilings. So that's the reason why we had to come in front of the board, and obviously because of...
True, because changing the height, but then everything else...
Then everything else gets triggered.
Gets triggered, our review of it.
Correct.
And then, the only other question I have is if you're at three feet in the back and you're at eight feet to the corner, is there any way to get the deck on the side of the house where there's more property and try to achieve the side, the rear setback?
Right now, we're, we basically went on, you know, previously there was a deck on the front of the house, and a deck on the back of the house. And that's where we went with the, along the lines of where to put the decks, or previously we're trying to stay within what the previous structure was there before and the footprint.
Well, you have a north side, northeast facing, you can have it.
So that was the premise, and trying to keep it in touch with what was there previously. And so-called.
I'm just asking how you could get back to conforming as many of the requirements as possible on the BIOD as to, that's the question I'm asking.
Yeah.
You're improving it a little bit, you could improve a little bit more. It's just trying to keep the desk on the east side, is that the...
Yes.
Yeah.
If it was pushed out, I mean, over here, they'd still have an east face, but you would have eight feet plus improvement in terms of the rear setback.
Yeah, there's a, not to say that that's the reason I had to, there's a lot of landscaping help in this area that's probably there, but walkways and so forth, or patio walkways and all that, or whatever. But that's, you can steer right there.
Where are your means of egress on this structure? One off this front, off the back deck? You mean, ingress to that?
Yep.
So you're going to end up with a stairway back there regardless, whether we make you take the deck away or not?
Correct.
Okay, same with the front, second means is up front?
Yes, correct.
Something would end up...
The stair would have to be, stair and back deck would have to be there in order to get egress out of the house.
So everything on the plans are the same?
Yes.
And I think we went over those first.
We went over those first, and we really was just getting Chris to get his figures down on paper and get him to match the plan that he submitted.
That's, it's this, that's the new site plan, which actually has...
So I outlined the existing, what the existing structure was previously. That's up in this. We submitted the site plan previously. You have it right there.
And the FAR and the lot coverage are based on all three buildings?
Correct.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Let me see what they asked for here. I move that the board find for relief from section 94, 97-4D of the new rezoning bylaws to allow the, to allow an increase in the height of the structure from the original dwelling. And to find that the new construction would be not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing building.
Could you wait a second?
One second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Do we, so this...
Okay, so let's make sure we have a complete copy of what you're doing.
So what is your original, right?
Yeah, I have these, I have these stamps, so I can easily, they can easily be used. That is a full set right there.
And you have the whole site plan and the plans, and you're...
Yes, I have everything on you.
Yep, yeah, Doug has one as well. This is the same set. That's a different, that's a different project.
Don't confuse them.
It's easily, can easily be done. Okay, thank you very much, everyone, and I give...
As far as, as far as making the connection, I think, I think C-Cam is going to start the process.
Thank you, folks, thank you.
Do you want to say?
Could be a long evening.
I can make that, that's fine, so I'll keep on for the record.
But just checking to see if that's the form, and if it says it's up to zero, and then...
Julie Ostrander?
Good evening.
Pulling forward, we're not looking for a full complaint, we're looking for review and directions.
Okay.
In the next meeting, we can get that.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, what do you have that's different?
We needed to have the floor checklist.
Okay.
You know, what's existing, what's non-existent, I have all of this up here.
Do you have copies that we can look at, what we're talking about? Thank you.
And they were put on two separate papers because they, the first one, sorry, they look at the ground floor for the proposed house. Only has a mechanical room, where's the ground floor on the existing property is where everything is. So I couldn't find a way to put them on the same, because they're mostly match up.
Yeah, I think we could have squeezed it in here and then just made a note in there, and so that's, you know...
Would you rather it that way? Because we're going to come back.
Yeah, I think less sheets and more, if you wrote in here and wrote mechanical room and just put an arrow directly to it.
Mechanical's on the first floor, excuse me, not...
Not below it?
Not below it. Where is the mechanical?
Do you have a plan to show that, or maybe you just...
So it's up. It's on pilings, but it's up.
So that does... So that doesn't...
Yeah, that's...
That doesn't count as F A R.
What's the height in it?
Eight feet.
Okay.
You've got eight feet, yeah, that it does. That needs to be down around, what do you, six-two?
Yeah, if you're around six feet, then you don't need to count that for F A R. It's suspended.
And where are you at the F A R?
No, they've got, they've got more than enough to play with. So in this case, it really doesn't, probably really need to call it out.
Yeah.
F A R is...
Five hundred and ninety-two?
Fourteen point six.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really doesn't make much difference.
I see the site plan. Julie, the other thing I noticed, you called out eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet for a garage, but really, we're just talking about parking under, right? So that can stay off, and that wouldn't come, that's not part of the F A R anyway. So you can leave that, leave that figure out.
It's not closed, it's got garage doors, but it's open or something?
Only on one plane, the garage doors comes down to the ground, the rest of it's gonna be open.
And the whole, the whole, it's all that, okay? It's all those lots. Twenty feet, eleven feet, eleven feet, and a lot of feet. And that's to the deck, to the side, to the side.
What did you end up with a treatment for that study area that's downstairs? How did you disqualify that from a bedroom? Have you done that yet?
They talked on Monday, they talked to Sam, and Sam, the study is open. But it's unpaced.
Uncased, well, yes.
Double carry.
Double wide, all right. It can be cased, but no jams, no...
So that's not in the plans that we have?
Yeah. Did you open that up?
Does that show? Oh, does it reflect in the new plan? Okay, okay.
That plan, oh, that, that will have meeting to count with.
Yeah, because zoning, that's not so much, it's not as important as it's for conservation. But we should have a consistent, definitely, we should have consistent plans.
Like, three bedrooms versus four, is that what the...
Yes, yeah, they're allowed three, and they had a study downstairs that had show doors on it, so we called that out at a past meeting.
I've received these, these are big forms of this, if you want it.
Well, at least leave a couple with us, so that we can take a look at them. A little easier to read.
And the height is measured from the average grade? Is there any grade change on the site? Thirty-four feet to the average of the highest roof? Can you see the elevation again? Is there any roof deck weight sign? That's good area. Thirty-four, four. Okay.
So I'll change the far sheet to be on one sheet, and it'll be more reasonable to read. Anything you guys see that's...
The attic space, the total attic space is only five foot hidden?
This is shown six-six.
What's the access to it, is it a pull-down hatch?
No.
And we did talk to Sam about that also, and...
So you get a full stairway. Where's your, where's your heating envelope? Attic floor or roof? If it's attic floor, that'd be the right answer. If it's roof, it's... It's on the attic, I can see it from here, yeah, it is.
Right answer.
Right answer.
Does anybody have any questions about this project?
The form, of course, in order to meet the requirement of documentation, is well, is well advanced.
Well, I can tell you what's told, that we should bring together conservation, because we're still gonna do some stuff.
That's fine.
You're gonna hear back from D E P, you know, probably get some comments from them, so if it's not time-sensitive, it might be worth your while to keep your two processes open till you can see that, you know, you're right down at the end of the funnel, and then...
Yeah.
You have good documentation, which is nice to see, so it's easy to see, review, and...
We just recently found out there was like a heritage issue with endangered species and stuff, so we don't know if we have to do anything with that. So we don't want to close this and then have to let it butter snow again.
Right.
It's a good move.
We just wanted to make sure you guys didn't have anything you needed to change or wanted to change.
Looks like you have, you know, plans to do, and...
So the only sheet, if you have your own F A R sheet, that's fine, but if you have this sheet in the application?
Yeah.
You can fill out.
Okay.
So that we have it in a standard contract on that.
Okay.
It's fine if you have that, but hit page two A. What was there, what you're proposing. The ordinance is, fill that in.
And then we don't need...
But we won't cut the two A because we have...
We're open to that.
But you get the plans, you get the site plan, with that page and that page, you have the application.
So you own three sheds, but only two-thirds of them are in your property?
Two-thirds, two-thirds of one of it.
Two-thirds of one.
This one is it?
Yeah, this one right here.
Okay. And those other two are going away?
Yes.
So completed application, and one page on that.
And you could get that before the next meeting, at least a couple of weeks if it's possible, so I can at least get it out to them and have a complete file.
Very helpful. Okay, so I guess we're gonna continue.
Make a motion to continue?
Yep.
Second?
Yep, so we just need to sign the annual sheet. So we'll give you a date.
I would sign one of each for the file. And if you have, actually, if you have more, I'll take two, because I'm gonna keep you on your decisions.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty interesting.
Right, exactly. Hopefully, you don't have to go back.
Oh, hopefully, one more time, we'll be this time.
Well, I mean, after that.
Hopefully, it's still here somewhere, and it will have overran it.
Is that one here?
I don't see her.
Yep, she's there. Hello. Oh, thank you, everything now, that's something that's built. That was the one that's missing.
Yeah, I just picked it up.
So I think you provided us everything you asked for.
Did?
I think, but...
Oh, no, I hate those butts.
Yeah, well, you had the size of the main house the last time you were here, and we don't have that anymore.
With the new application?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Do you have this packet here? That's the one that, the updated one she sent.
Yeah, I think we do. Does that give the size of the house?
Well, you just want the outside dimensions on?
Well...
Because they're on this big plan. Yeah, they're fifty-two by twenty-eight. That's true, and then there's a deck off, but the main dwelling is...
Is it two stories at fifty...
Is that a two-story structure? The existing home?
Existing home is a split entry, yes.
Split entry, and both floors are developed as livable space?
Yes.
So that goes...
Sixteen fifty in the square footage.
Right, okay, so is that what that comes to? Last bit.
Watch how I'm... I'm just gonna take it out of my pocket.
For one level, it's fourteen fifty-six. Fifty-two by twenty-eight, right?
Yes.
So she was over sixteen hundred, so that was...
Yes, you're there. Right.
And then the size of the...
But that's one level, you said it's split levels, but it's two full levels.
Yes. With the exception of the split, of course.
So it's around...
Then we have a, so then we have accessories.
Card?
You're there.
I think there was in the original.
Right, that's, that's, is what gave us the...
That's what we're checking, how many bedrooms in the whole?
And the size of the secondary one is sixteen twenty-eight or something?
Seven or eight. I don't think it was. Second floor, one day.
You have the square footage of the apartment?
Yeah. Five oh-one. Plus, okay, so common hallway, you can count the storage as five oh-one.
Yep.
I don't see the card in there, but I can print it off a paper.
Well, this one has the size of the house and the apartment. Everything else is good. Yeah, that's...
I saw the accessories now, but I think it's a little large.
It's really the questions we had last month, Eric, was make sure the electrical ran off the house.
Yep, it was clear.
Clear that the septic system, quickened it to work. And we needed a better plan than what we had last...
Yep, that's three. And then the primary dwelling and the secondary dwelling sizes in terms of percentages and...
Right, right, which were, which seemed fine last month, but we couldn't write them down, and...
That's good. And the only other question is just this unfinished storage area. You can't turn that into another apartment.
No, no. See, they... This was like the barn, with their, my brother had the antiques, and this he used to store more.
Well, I'm just talking about future evolution, just because you get one, doesn't mean you can come back in another. Okay.
Yeah, well, whoop, she never has to come back.
And this is, this is Brook Street, right?
Yes.
So this lot does have furnished, right?
Yes.
Anybody have questions about this project?
So, Susan, did you get a chance to verify the bedroom?
Here, you can look at, that's, I only see one current for... But, but this one?
I think the main house.
Oh, yeah, main house is there, yeah.
Just trying to look for, print out the one...
Plus the H two, but that's the twenty, so it's twenty-five fifty-two. Three bedrooms.
Perfect, okay, right, it's the other one again. Yep, so we just need to write that someplace, I guess. Square footage. And if you don't have any other questions, uh...
Maybe we should just mention it in the decision.
Yes. So just keep doing your thing.
Motion?
Yep. Thank you for working every time.
So I propose a motion.
Yes, yes.
To grant a special permit for a detached accessory apartment in an existing, on existing lot, existing property, existing building, that meets the full intent of ninety-seven dash ten D, Part Five, detached accessory apartments. Primary dwelling. Approximately twenty-nine hundred square feet. Has three existing bedrooms. And the lot size meets the requirement, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
That's good. Would be forty thousand square feet.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes.
Thank you.
Right, so you're gonna write, right, we got the gist of the numbers.
Okay, next up will be the forty D application.
About three here, but...
Pull up a chair up, pull up a chair up if you want, you don't have to stand.
Thank you.
Do you want to leave to the table right now? Just to inform, you know, what's here?
I thought you were getting a word out.
Yeah, I am. You got, your copies are down, right? The chair will address what you're...
Okay, so what we'd like tonight is to go with a checklist to make sure you submitted what is required. And Sue has hopefully a checklist, because I don't have one.
I'm just gonna take it right from the rules and...
Yeah, that's fine, so that's where we'll start.
So we're here at a regularly scheduled zoning board of fails meeting. Preliminary site development plans showing the locations and outlines for closed buildings.
Okay, so...
Proposed locations, dimensions, materials for streets, drags, parking areas, walks and paved areas, landscaping improvements, et cetera, on the site.
Maybe you could find what we're looking for easier than we can.
Well, for the record, my name is Jeff Engler from SCV LSC, I'm a consultant to the applicant. Thank you. It's our belief that this engineering plan set implies with everything the town is looking for relative to a forty B application, it's also my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is this the first forty B application that the town submitted?
Yes.
So as you may or may not be aware, per forty B regulations, schematic design is required for the application, we would represent to you that what is submitted here goes beyond that. So there is quite a bit of engineering detail submitted in this. It's also my understanding that everybody has received a copy of this binder, which is where it came down, I believe, a couple of weeks ago.
I was the one that went through it initially with, um, with our planning board member to go through the checklist initially and see what was in there. So that has subsequently, I believe, they've addressed, you know, everything that we did ask for in the letter. I haven't gone through, through it with a fine toothed comb, because it was my, um, my position that it was in good condition and that the board at this point, it should be presented to them and they should make that determination and, um, you know, look at setting a hearing date for it to be heard in more detail.
Well, basically, I mean, and I agree with what Sue said, I mean, it's on us, I mean, honestly, I think the initial application was sufficient for a reproduction error that we should have checked. So what we did is we came down to the cover letter indicates and brought all the sections that were identified as omitted and added them to all of these binders, which we submitted twenty-five, with give or take initially. So the items that were identified in that, um, late March, early April letter that was provided to us relative to the deficient sections, all of those sections are, have been not only in this box and hard copy format, but are officially included in the binders that were submitted to distribution presumably to all the municipal boards or departments that would have any interest in this application. So that's a long-winded way of saying we apologize for the omissions, but we believe that the application is most definitely complete at this point in time and we look forward to the board setting the first official public hearing date, at which point we'll come and do a whole dog and pony show of the full application and all components.
Do we want to have any questions before we... Is that a date?
I don't at this point.
I don't.
We'll assume that everything's here and if we find out different, we'll...
Yep, it seems like the initial, whatever we said was correct, that's what happened for the record, and so now it's been...
So, uh, when do we want to set a hearing date? Two weeks? Does that sound reasonable?
Your, your regularly scheduled hearing for the month of May is already May eighteenth. Okay.
How much, we don't know what we have for that.
I have two new applications for that, and any continued hearings that will happen, so...
Do we want to schedule that for the same night, do you think, or...
How long do we have after we accept the initial application?
Thirty days. What's the public know that you have to notify of if you formally detect you have enough time, if you didn't, two weeks from tonight?
Yeah, because we have, what, two? Two, two a week apart, so you...
Or do we do it three weeks?
I think we do it three weeks.
I just try to not do it the same night as our other hearings.
It's, it's your pleasure, you tell us.
It would be a full house, and there'd be a lot going on, we don't want to push one to the other.
I'm good with going out three weeks and having it.
Everyone should just...
The only thing on the agenda.
So, uh, three weeks is gonna be good for you?
Three weeks is then the...
The...
Twenty-fifth.
I think, does that sound good?
Is anyone alive? Yeah, I don't think any. Let's place my phone between here and somewhere.
I just want to hold the...
Oh, you gotta get the room.
Calendar to, just make sure I can just book that right now.
That would be important, have a room.
I don't think anyone's gonna come.
We've done this before, huh?
And I'm sorry, you said the twenty-fifth, is that where you were looking at?
No, that's our regular scheduled period.
No, the eighteen.
No, eighteen.
Oh, the eighteen.
Yeah.
Well, that would be five weeks then, wouldn't it?
No, so ten eighty to twenty-seven, right?
We're one week later than normal, we're going back to three weeks.
So you're still, even if you were close, we were, we're not gonna, you know, but you're still within the thirty days, so that would work.
Okay, so whatever...
The twenty-fifth.
So the twenty-fifth is currently open right now?
All right, that's Thursday night, right?
That's a Thursday evening, but...
You typically start at seven thirty?
Seven thirty, if you want everybody to be here.
Yeah. Make sure I'm here at seven thirty would be better for me, please.
Twenty-fifth.
Box of these, you get... You sit up behind, actually.
They're not in binders, no, they're just like that.
Okay.
That's what more I want to do.
That's what you have, too. Did you get any of these?
No.
We'll, we'll preach it some of these.
So, okay.
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, the show on thirty.
Okay, awesome, nice to meet you.
Right here.
Thank you for someone working with you as well.
Have a good night.
Take care.
You guys want to take your copies tonight, so I'll take them each.
Right, well, we put it back in the box and then we'll distribute them, I mean, otherwise... All right, so May twenty-fifth is the date.
I did.
All right, sorry, sir.
Okay, and I'm the only one that took this.
No, I got that.
I don't know really what it is.
Is that, is that different?
Sure, it says in response to Susan Wieser's letter, uh, blah, 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 blah. As requested, maybe on the side copies, uh...
It's different than the, it's a totally different document, but...
Yeah.
Okay, I can get it later.
Just make sure we all have the same thing before we leave.
Right.
Carolyn Davis Dempsey, number seven, Forty-Eighth Street, Long Island. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section ninety-seven dash four D, and various zoning bylaws that proposed construction will increase both the height and the lot coverage. Assessors map U zero four dash zero dash thirty-nine.
Hi, John Southern, again, pleased to have a single house and a single lot.
David Dempsey, nice to meet you all. Pleasure to meet you.
And Carol is... You all have seen this anyway, but, um, I believe that we have copies of the site plan of the existing, proposed. We are essentially taking an existing house that's there now, which is in pretty tough shape, and we're pulling it back so that it is, um, the new house is gonna be adhering all the setbacks. And in actuality, the existing lot coverage is actually twenty-five percent right now. And we're reducing it to eighteen percent. That's on the lot coverage. On the FAR, we're actually, um, keeping our twenty-five percent of the four thousand five hundred and fifty square feet, which coincidentally is eleven hundred and thirty-eight square feet, which is the same as the lot coverage is. But we're actually increasing the, the FAR to exactly twenty-five, to get eleven hundred and thirty-eight square feet, the pocket underneath the house, reverse house, typical reverse house. Bedrooms on the first floor, two bathrooms, and then we're actually taking the house and we're compressing it once you get up onto the, the second floor so that we make our square footage work within our twenty-five. And then there's a roof deck, and, um, pretty, pretty simple, simple plan. I don't know if, is it okay for me to invite any of folks out there who haven't seen the plan? Feel free to come up and take a look at it, um...
Carol, you wanna compensate off the concern?
No, thanks.
The site is relatively flat?
Yes. It is, they're, they're, they had, um, actually, um, a pile plan for it, um, we're gonna be going with steel piles. The house is gonna be heated from, with the hot air underneath the house within a small mechanical area, pretty typical to what you see a lot. Yeah, we, we basically brought the, brought the house back so that it's got a little more breathing room and opportunity to, to do that, which is sort of rare sometimes.
How much headroom and the stair going to the roof?
Headroom and the stair, only two. Looks like four. Oh, it's, um, it's six foot eight to the door that takes you out, and then the roof comes up, and then half the height of that roof would be our mean height, exact thirty-four feet. We could play some games with the way we frame the first floor by incorporating the structure within the rim beam, but that's kind of tricky to do, and if we, if we don't have to do that, we don't think we want to do that.
Right, just wanna make sure that when you're, you're not moving all the way up and then all of a sudden you go, put the roof on, and then your, your... Because I was throwing a scale on, the drawing's a little off proportionally, and so at first I was, and then checked, and that's, that's why.
I just went through the figures again.
Get your building height at thirty-four feet. But what you, what you really mean is your mean is thirty-four, and... No, um, I can see that you, I can see you there with these two together.
Yeah, well, subtract, this is John, John, um...
Hargreaves.
Yeah. I hadn't subtracted thirteen point two, forty-seven point two, that should be thirty-four feet.
It is, yeah, it is.
I think that's the engineer's...
Okay, so he just did this, this is, uh...
That's his base.
It's N E V D.
Yep.
Overhangs, they scale at two feet? Because that's what I had him scale at, at two feet.
Yeah, the, I'm, you know, that, that's something I'd like to not just briefly talk about. Why is that? I like deeper overhangs.
Because that's what it says right here.
Yeah.
Why it is, I can't give you the history of how we are here.
More sense it makes, because, you know, you have shade in the summer and the sun's lower and...
But at some point, we decided that the edges of the building with big wide overhangs is not really fair for lot coverage.
It's a bigger, it makes a bigger scale, a bigger over.
Yeah.
That's really a bit of a monster.
Just the old passive solar stuff that comes in.
So when you did your calculations, did you go from overhang to overhang, or is this the building that we're looking at?
Um, the, for your purposes, the, it's the overhang.
You did the overhang for lot coverage?
Yeah. But that's lot coverage, yeah, not for, not for the FAR.
No, that, it wouldn't, right, it doesn't come into the FAR. And the deck, I think you've got this deck at forty-five, but I think that scales at sixty. Fifteen by four? Is it fifteen by four?
Well, it actually, you know, goes into, goes into the deck. It actually hangs out four, but it, but it comes in.
I see what you got, okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, that allows us to channel it easy.
Getting a little, uh, quite heavy. Does anybody want to speak in favor of the project? Anybody want to speak in opposition to the project? Questions?
Yeah, you do once in a while.
Well, we live, presently live right next door, so we want to be able to...
Takes care of one of these on the...
And, and actually, uh, good about, uh, good, uh, developing seeds, condo always enables and shows.
Yes, we have several people from all of this park, for, really, just to kind of give them the opportunity so they can have to come here tonight if they really want to ask some questions, they can look at the plans.
I think it's always helpful.
Yep. Okay, so the P is all, the sides are very, uh, good, and better. The SAR is, then, is all good, is all okay.
Yeah, I thought it was a hard application, because there wasn't much to pick apart.
Yeah.
Lot coverage is good.
But that's the only, that's, the percentage of lot coverage is the only one I had that I picked up on in terms of the E's, and if you measure, if it's twenty-eight by twenty-eight to the building and you've got two feet on either side, it's thirty-two by thirty-two, which is a thousand twenty-four. So it comes out more like twenty-two percent.
Yeah, instead of twenty-four.
So...
So that's the whole lot coverage you're talking about.
Right, and I'm looking at the sheet for lot coverage, which is listed as eighteen, and then it's listed as twenty-five here. So this, this number and this number don't jive, and they need to jive, and then it's, it's good. So how did you get to twenty-five for the proposed, if on the worksheet here where, where it's listed as eighteen?
Well, if it's under twenty-four feet, right, the overhang, uh, twenty-four inches.
It's got eighteen for the proposed.
I think it's, uh, anything that exceeds twenty.
Right.
Even if it exceeds twenty inches.
So we won't be exceeding twenty.
That's, okay, you're making that decision right now?
I make that decision when I exceed twenty. It doesn't matter.
Okay, these two stairways, they both go down to ground?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and they're the ones that, they both things on the same...
Yeah, he wanted the secondary means to degress out of that.
Yeah, okay, no problem with that. Okay, so mechanical building? A mechanical building?
Yes.
And that can be suspended two feet off around...
How do you get into it? Come in. Outside only, okay.
Right, so the high school, is it okay with the, uh, the entrance to the depth?
Another... Another small house.
A little big house. Little big house up in the rear. Little house with big shrines. Yeah.
Okay, so we want to entertain the motion?
Sure. I'm going for a finding. I'll propose a motion to grant a finding and release of section 97-4D to increase the height and lot coverage as the proposed plan meets all P I O D front and side setbacks, height requirements, FAR, and lot coverage. And that the proposed plan's house will not be more detrimental to the existing neighborhood.
Do you have a second?
Where am I?
Oh, sorry.
And just one either note on the drawings or note in the motion that the overhangs will be revised to be...
Not to exceed 20.
Not to exceed 20 inches.
I would put that on the plan and have them initial it, and I'll send it to it, and that will become part of the record, and I'm going to be putting down the decisions.
Do it right on here, Joe, while you're here. I marked up my plan, so I will go and take your plan and do it right here.
I don't know why you think it's wrong. Can I see a copy of the document?
Yep.
Okay.
Right in the center.
Okay.
Great.
Want to stamp it?
I'll stamp that out of there, yeah.
You got to do the physical distance. You got to be close.
We didn't get to that.
We didn't get to that.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
All favor?
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, folks. We're going to get us... You got to sign.
They did.
Oh, they signed. Yep.
Application for the house.
Yep, the number, well, yes, because the drawing provides to make the numbers. All right, next one. Robert Tuttle, 9 Melody Lane, Palm Island, Newbury. The applicant is requesting a finding from relief from section 97-4B5D for the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed construction will increase the lot coverage, assessed as map U03-0-10.
Do you have any other paperwork?
Do you have those?
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're all set on that one? Okay, so tell us about the project and what you want to do.
I need to tear down the place, a new one, essentially the same design, some three feet deeper on the east side and a foot wider on the south. So the coverage increases slightly.
Doesn't affect the setback? Any questions, Doug?
I don't. We've seen this one at conservation, so I'm fairly familiar with it.
So I have, everything in the application checks out. I just have a couple lot questions. You can't have a lot in a house if you don't have any frontage. So you do have frontage, right? I mean, your address may be Melody Lane, but isn't Johnson Road a road?
Yeah, it is. That's true, yeah. So those two lots combined, there is frontage.
Right, so they are combined, it's one particular slot. You add the two areas together, so I think you're representing here that it's 13,158 square feet and it's 17,987 because the two lots are combined, they're one lot now.
Right, so, yeah.
It's kind of a bowtie lot, it's one lot. So the square footage needs to be added together. Johnson Road is the frontage then? And Johnson Road, frontage of 50, all right, my glasses, 58 feet 10. You can't have a legal lot if you don't have any frontage, so... So I think the frontage needs to be corrected to 58, 10.
And so about an oversized lot?
And the size of the lot needs to be corrected to 17,098.
Does it affect anything?
Yeah, it makes it better.
Yeah, it does, it makes it better. Just, yeah, just makes it accurate also.
Just make it work. And I'd like to see a better, bigger site plan, and the site plan is here, and the setbacks, at least on the two sides, that are anywhere close, which aren't close, are on here, so it's all.
It's all there.
Anybody in the audience have a question on this project? In favor of proposed?
I do have a letter that a neighbor submitted from 8 Melody Lane, just voicing their support of the project.
Okay. Put that to the file?
Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to grant the finding and relate to 97-4D, Part 5, Part D, for the P I O D for the proposed project for enlargement of the existing deck as it meets all P I O D side yard setbacks. No change in the FAR, slight change in the lot coverage with the keeping, and the proposed deck enlargement is not more detrimental to the existing neighborhood.
We have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Good lord.
Thank you. So we'll just give you this one, that's the record.
Yep.
Good night. Thank you. Dave Flynn, 46 Northern Boulevard, Palm Island, Newbury. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section 97-4D for the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed construction will increase the lot coverage, assessed as map U03-0-191.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for your time. Just to simplify, just put a little crib sheet together, and I'll just quickly talk to that, to summarize what I'm trying to do. Thank you again. I bought the property six months ago and done a lot of work in trying to get it dry, leaks in the house and safety, but as part of that, as you'll see on the first page up on the right, is, there's an existing decking on the grade in front of the plan that the town really has, and so I'm going to be demolishing what's there, taking that out. So it's about four feet off the existing elevated deck. There's another decking. On the second page, you can see with the new design of the plan, so this is a small version of the full-scale plan that you have, I'll be adding in that four-foot decking, just thinking of it as level, taking the stuff that's on the grade, leveling it up, so it just encompasses that part of it, and then pitching it out a little bit on the right side to add the new stairs, so that basically you can walk up the stairs once you're down. As you can start to see on the right side of this little crib sheet, I will also be extending the roof that exists, the additional four feet to cover that new decking that I'm going to be putting. And finally, on this third page of the crib sheet, the elevations kind of give you an idea of that everything else stays as it currently exists in the property, just that, again, we're bumping that beachside on front of the house out just to enclose the porches.
Okay, so in the narrative you have here, when you're saying the second floor deck addition will be installed over the existing first floor deck, is that a solid deck or is other nature coming through to the first deck?
Right now, today, it's a solid deck.
Yeah, but what are you going to do?
The same.
Okay, so if you have a solid floor, which becomes a solid ceiling over your bottom deck?
Yes.
Then it becomes FAR, it becomes living space, not a deck.
Okay.
Okay, so that changes how your application is going to be. I don't think it's going to affect it.
It shouldn't affect it, but you're right, it may be...
Yeah, so then, okay, so that's the second floor deck addition, and then the west porch enclosure will be enclosed and converted into a mudroom, so that you're already enclosing.
Right, because that's the, yes.
Okay, so what was that before, just a open porch?
It's the open part of the porch.
Okay, so that becomes part of the FAR.
That is exactly, and I included that.
Okay.
Yes, it's about 120 square feet of porch which gets enclosed. That's that keep the water out of the basement problem.
Yeah.
Because it leaks right now, but that is the change, absolutely.
Okay, so because of what you're doing with the second floor deck?
Right.
Also need to change the figures on the FAR?
Yes, absolutely. So that I did not include in my calculations.
Right.
That is correct.
Anything, Doug?
Don't think so. I've had an opportunity to sit with Dave a couple of times, so I don't have any questions for him.
There's no building elevation for height.
Well, the height of this elevation isn't going to change at all of the existing roofline, everything is there. I do have a copy of it in the large picture over here I could show you, but I do not disclose it with, it is not even on the script sheet. There's a, well, if you kind of see the height, it's kind of hard to see, I can show you in full, the full res of elevation.
Right, but if we're saying it's in keeping with the P I O D and we're trying to figure out what is and what isn't, then we need an elevation that has from the average grade to the average height of the highest roof.
Right.
Not the highest ridge of the roof.
Right.
Understand that? So from average grade to the mean height of the highest roof.
Okay.
Okay, so that needs to be somewhere documented.
Okay.
So that was one. Two was the lot coverage, and rough calculation seemed just a little bit off, and it may have been what you just picked up on.
Okay, well, it's also that I think I might have made an error because I included the driveway that exists as part of the lot coverage, so that's why it's maybe larger than it should be.
Probably in conservation. You're going to need to correct that.
Okay, I understand.
And then, I mean, I take issue with this as a site plan. I know that it's good for a deed and recorded, but it's not the scale, and there are no setback dimensions on it. And I think that's something we've been pressing upon, is that, you know, hand drawn drawings are... We need a drawing that accurately shows the location of the dwelling against the property lines.
Okay.
And this is a...
I understand.
You know what I mean?
Especially where you're extending. Oh, you're extending some lines. Yes. I understand.
So I don't know if you want to take some notes because you're going to have to come back and see this.
That's right.
There you go, so you don't come back empty handed.
Yeah, and, you know, this is, this will be recorded with your...
With your deed.
With your deed. So any assumptions or, it should be, you know, it should be a survey plan drawing.
I understand, but so just to, and then back to the lot plan, so the FAR needs to include the front decking that will be closed.
It'll be under...
Yes.
Under the solid roof.
Anything on the solid roof. That's correct.
So that will reduce your lot size but increase your FAR.
Right, I understand. Just wanted to make sure that that's exactly what it was.
Okay, and Eric would like a height dimension.
Elevations.
Height elevations, yeah.
Yeah, so it just needs to be recorded on the sheet.
Well, I could provide, yeah, I can double check that at full scale, and what I would do is submit the next time, and I'll have a full plan with the elevations.
David, remove the driveway from low lot coverage.
Yes.
And the same with conservation. It doesn't count as lot coverage on either application.
Right. My research, anyway, I forgot the wrong one.
That's all right.
So you need to correct the application, page two?
Yes.
Or two A?
Right, two A. No, exactly.
To reflect the change in the FAR and the lot coverage.
Right, exactly. So that's the one, and then the two elevations in the site plan.
Other than confirm the lot, get a site plan that actually has got dimensions on it. Check the elevations with the height.
So you need to...
Perfect. Oh, yeah. I will be. I didn't think it was going to work the first time. I appreciate your time.
It's closed.
No, it's going to be here. I will. Happy to make it work. Been here a long time, so. Yep.
Yes. Well, thank you.
It's my call. I'm doing it.
All set?
All set.
Three, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight. All right, thank you. Okay, and Eric would like a height dimension.
Yep.
Elevations.
Height elevations, yeah. That's right.
Yeah, so it just needs to be recorded on the sheet.
Well, I can provide, yeah, I can, I double-check that at full scale. And what I would do is submit the next time I'll have a full plan with the elevations.
So David, with that, height on it. David, remove the driveway from lot coverage. And the same with conservation. It doesn't count as lot coverage on either application.
Right. My research, anyway. I thought the wrong one.
That's all right.
That's all right. So you need to correct the application, page two.
Yes.
For two A.
Right, two A.
No, exactly.
To reflect the change in the FAR and the lot coverage.
Right, exactly. There, so that's the one and then the two elevation in the site plan.
Right. Everything.
Right, confirm the lot, get a site plan that actually has got dimensions on it. Check the elevations with the height.
Mm-hmm.
So you need to.
Eighteen? Perfect. Oh, yeah.
So.
So you'll be here?
I will be. I didn't think it was going to work the first time. Flawless. I appreciate your time.
It's closed.
No. No, it's going to be here. I will. Happy to make it work. Been here a long time, so.
It's getting better.
Yep. Yes, thank you.
It's my call. I'm doing it. It's still my call.
Where's that? Two weeks.
All set?
All set.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight. All right, thank you.
Gregory Cynthia Charles Bashaw, Twenty Central Street, Byfield. The applicant is requesting a variance for relief in section ninety-seven dash ten D. Section five, part five of the Newbury zoning bylaws. The proposed construction requires the minimum lot size forty thousand square feet. Assessors map R eighteen dash zero dash fifty D. R eighteen dash zero dash six.
Hi, Greg. My name's Greg Bashaw.
Yep.
My wife Cynthia. Could not make it tonight because she's teaching. Susan, I've met you before. My father is ninety-three years old. He's in Arizona. Could not make it tonight. My application was, some of my neighbors are here, so it's an application that deserves some open dialogue between both the board, maybe some of my neighbors, whether they're for or against it. As I read your ninety-seven, ten dash five dash D. In two thousand thirteen, you proposed a law to help provide more rentable units in the town of Newbury. Are units for different generations of the family, extended families. I believe what I'm proposing here is to do just that. I had a property at one-twenty Central Street that has an existing barn on the property. I'm not asking to add anything to that barn. I'm not asking to expand it. Alls I'm asking is to take that, part of that barn and turn it to a small rentable unit. I meet all the requirements except for one. And that one requirement is my lot is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen square feet. Law says we have to have a forty thousand square foot lot. My argument is that lot has been a lot in existence prior to zoning. That lot, between a lot at one-twenty Central Street, one-eighteen Central Street, one-sixteen Central Street. Me and my family have lived there for over fifty-four years.
So are there three lots now?
No, there's only one now.
They're all combined?
No, there's only one lot at this time. So the lot I'm talking about is, I'm just saying that on the, between the three lots, myself and my family have lived there for over fifty-four years. Okay, so I've been there for a long time. The only lot that's now occupied is the lot at one-twenty Central Street. Which is actually one-twenty Central Street and it's also another lot, which is the end of that Lepom Drive, Lot H of that Lepom Drive. So combined, I only have twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen square feet. So the question is, I'm asking for a variance from the forty thousand square foot new. And if anyone has, I have pictures if anyone wants to see what I'm trying to do.
So these are the pictures we submitted before.
I didn't see them. My copies weren't.
I had some pretty good copies here.
I have some color ones here.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to Google or, I looked at it, so I'm good there.
This was originally three lots. The property at Central Street is, my lot at one-twenty, it was actually one lot. But they changed the lot lines in ninety-one because they found out that the original engineering was incorrect.
So that's that dotted line.
That's the dotted line. So they changed the actual property lot lines in ninety-one because they found out after we did, after we started running the numbers, we found out that it was, it was wrong. That's why they, so that was a correction that was, actually got emotional when that went wrong.
And was that twenty thousand square foot lot copped out when the town went from ten to twenty thousand in the, maybe seventies?
Actually, the lot was a lot in existence back in the late fifties, early sixties.
As the twenty thousand?
As the twenty thousand.
But it was a lot as of this or just laid out as of that?
Laid out as of that. And why they changed it, so they found out, what I found out after running all the numbers, that it was shy a few hundred feet. So we said, okay, well, that's, you know, that's why they changed that lot line. That's why there's that dotted lot line on that lot. That really goes back to ninety-one is when we approved, you know, that we readjusted the lot lines to correct the actual square footage of the lot.
Okay.
My father, the property had been subdivided, you know, broken up to smaller lots in the late fifties.
So I'm just trying to understand when this was created. In the late, in the late fifties, it was.
A lot.
Five thousand square foot lots. It was several. It was more than one lot.
It was, well, all the property, my father's property was, went from basically one-twenty, uh, went down the street. There was three or four lots down the street that had sold.
Just, just this piece?
Just that piece, yeah.
Yeah.
So is that all nineteen fifty-nine is all?
Well, that's what I'm trying to drill at. I'm trying to figure out whether this thing was in this shape in nineteen fifty-nine. In nineteen ninety-one, it was changed. I wouldn't need, myself, I'd need an opinion from town council as to whether that constituted a new lot at that time.
But there was already a structure on it and everything at that time. Why, why that was changed was because it wasn't, you know, it was off. After I ran the numbers, I said, hey, Dad, what's going on here? You're selling a lot and it's shy.
So, so it wasn't as large as it.
It was off a couple hundred square feet, well, like a hundred. So I said, so we said, well, let's redraw the lines so that it is the twenty thousand, one hundred and fifteen, you know.
And at the time, did it go through the planning board or any boards in town for approvals? Did it get recorded?
It did get recorded. I might have it here for you.
Okay.
I might have it here actually for you. That it was approved and signed off.
Because I'm just trying to find a hardship for you. The buildings, all of that stuff works out for you. The lot does not.
Right.
And this is a variance, so we need that hardship. If it's a hardship of the land, if we can find one for you, great, we can potentially give you some relief.
Right.
If not, then we can't. You know, variances are a pretty high burden. Most of what we've heard here tonight are findings, and that's a really, that's a much lower burden than, than this.
Well, hardship is the land is, which is probably the most discouraging part of this whole thing. Is that if you go back to the planning board and the zoning board, of when they decided to go from a small ten thousand, twenty thousand foot lot to a forty thousand foot lot. My father was on the board. He was the one that enacted those changes. So my hardship with the land was.
Your father's fault.
Everybody want to blame it on their parents. So not thinking of your forethought. He just cut the lots up, small.
Right.
Why? Well, there was no zoning back then.
Right, right.
And then as he goes forward, he decides, yes, you know, really the lot should be forty thousand square foot lot. So I'm trying to say that, you know, do I fall, my hardship that it was, that was a lot in existence was prior to zoning? Do I have a hardship of the lot? No, it's a small lot. It was, that's the way it was made. That's the way it's been. It's a small lot. So other hardships, you know.
Hardships for variance aren't, aren't generally considered a lot being too small, unfortunately. And that's not, but according to the law, that's not a hardship, unfortunately. It's usually a shape or something. A shape, a topography.
Yeah.
What's the size of the primary residence?
Primary residence is roughly around twenty-five hundred square feet. It's a four-bedroom cape.
Okay, so at twenty-five hundred square feet, the. Just making sure for.
Lots as, the lots as you get to thirty-five percent of your.
Four thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Thirty-five percent for.
Thirty-five percent.
Of, as defined in above, or one thousand square feet of gross interior floor or whichever is less. So you're right at a thousand. You're just over a thousand thirty-six. You take the gross measurements of it, so probably inside is a little bit smaller.
Well, I'm only talking about the second floor. I make a small studio on the second floor.
Right, this is the, right, so the thirty-six square feet in terms of the gross dimensions, that works. I just wanted to thirty-five percent, if it needs a thirty-five percent, that's all. Because I didn't see where the, you know, you gave the dimensions of the, of the primary house, but it doesn't exactly say how many stories or gross square feet.
On the house, on the main house, private?
Yeah, five hundred.
Did you find the deed or not?
Uh, where they changed those things, I don't know if I had, if I brought it with me tonight with the.
What year would it have been?
So your dad is ninety-three. How's his health?
Still drives?
He's still a dad.
It's not what we asked.
All right. It's, it's like anyone that's ninety-three, so I mean, that's one of the considerations why we'll look.
You, you, would you consider him disabled or handicapped?
I would consider him both. I would consider both, but still he's still, you know, still can get around. Not as good as before. But after you. You know, I'm looking at what, you know, what ninety-seven was, what this law was trying to accomplish. And what it was trying to accomplish was to make more units available in the town. You know, we have some neighbors here. I have some neighbors here that have, you know, live in the neighborhood. I have neighbors that are here tonight that actually rent because of a unit that was made prior to zoning laws. So, you know, what are we really trying to accomplish in the town? Are we really trying to accomplish that, that to make more affordable units? Or are we just going to put a lot in there that makes it so?
I think we all understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we also have to look at the way the planning board and the town residents voted to.
Allow.
Allow these type of things.
Yeah, your intent is there. My, my thought too is when you said that is that if you were putting it on the first floor, I think we commend you and, and say, you know, you're really trying hard to, for an elderly apartment.
Well, that's, well, that's a catch because the barn is not for elderly. That's actually for me. Because my house is handicapped accessible on the first floors. Everything's there on the first floor.
Where does it say that now? But then, are you the primary owner and the primary residence? And you just flipped the residence and the, and the unit? And I guess as long as, as long as you're all family and you're not really renting it to your father, then it doesn't matter who lives in what house, if he owns the primary house. But, you know, the intent, the other intent is that, you know, people don't make a tiny shack for themselves if they rent out their bigger house to renters.
What you do if you have three children that you put through college and they all moved out and they're all on their own living now.
I know, but we're going through the intent of what, what the bylaw was. So we're not trying to drill holes. We're just trying to.
No, but the intent also says that in that ninety-seven, it actually has a clause that says that the primary owner can live in either unit.
Right.
It doesn't state I have to say, it doesn't state I have to live in the primary house. Says I have to live in one of the units, which is my intent.
Right.
Yeah.
The biggest hurdle is the size of a lot.
I was going to say, if we can get through the lot stuff, I don't have any problem with the structures. That they can be modified. They can, you can adjust the square footage to make those work. Those aren't, those aren't the problem. The problem is the, the lot and finding the hardship. You know, we have an awful lot of ten and twenty thousand square foot lots in town.
Right.
We have to find you different than those. If we grant variance and relief here, and we can't be arbitrary and capricious. So we have to have something that we can put in right.
I understand that. It's just, I think after talking to the building inspector, when we talked about this law when it came into effect for detached and attached accessory apartments, he says it's only made a difference for six units in the town. That's really, did that really help? I mean, six is, six is better than nothing.
But you do understand that, I'm not trying to pass the buck, but the planning board wrote these bylaws, the town meeting approved them. And there's only so much wiggle room for us to legally change things. And it's very little wiggle room, and a variance is, has no wiggle room.
True. And I agree with what Doug said. If there was some, some way to understand what the hardship of the land is, then the other metrics of the requirement of accessory apartments and a detached accessory apartments can be there.
Can you supply us with some of those deed references so that we can trace those changes back?
Well, you just go back to the, when the properties were originally purchased, you know, when that was. But, you know, they were all in existence prior.
If you can run that timeline farce when those came together.
It may or may not.
Right, it may or may not.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there are a few records on the sale and registry of deeds that just popped up there real quick. So you might be able to map things there.
But I think we're certainly listening to anybody that asks questions or support for your project. But I don't think we can go forward with it with a vote tonight without having some other information that may help us, you know.
Right.
Find something favorable.
Yeah, I mean, it's a small lot. It's not forty thousand square feet, so. You know, when they're, you know, I thought it might follow the grandfather clause. You guys say no. You know, because it was a lot in existence prior to zoning, it is a small lot. And that's, I guess that's a hardship. A hardship was, no one really kind of thought in the future when they started dividing these lots up.
May I ask if anybody would like to speak in favor of the project? Okay, we'll start with you. If you could give us your name and where you live.
Robin Bornstein. I live right behind Greg because he owned the house that I live in now initially. And I have to say, I'm, there aren't many rental properties in Byfield. And I remember I was living in Ipswich with my boyfriend and we needed to move out of where we were. It just came with time. And he had his eye on that property for a long time. And we were thrilled to be able to move in that house. And Greg and Cindy are fine people and they were great, great landlords. And they sent, sold the house, Cindy right here, and she's my landlady. But we're all one big happy family.
Robin lives at one-eighteen Central Street. I asked Robin to come tonight because Robin lives in a unit that was legally made into a small rental unit at one-eighteen Central Street. Made prior to some of the zoning laws. Robin's been here renting in town for eighteen years.
I mean, a really long time.
She's an example of what, I think, what, what this law is trying to do is to help people like Robin that, that there's rentable units in town.
I mean, I feel, you know, forever grateful.
There aren't that many either.
There really aren't. And, I mean, I just feel like the luckiest ducky ever, you know. And just also me being made, reuse of an existing building should be highly commended rather than keep on building, keep on building, you know. And so that has to work in his favor. I have another neighbor who lives in an existing structure. And there's got to be some kind of grandfather clause in there somewhere. And rules are rules, but they're not hard and fast all the time, as I'm just saying, in favor.
Easy for you to say.
Well.
Who else would like to speak?
Susan Fogarty at one-sixteen, what am I, one-thirteen? I was going to be in photograph. God, I've been there over thirty years. One-thirteen Central and Greg and Cindy are great neighbors and very responsible, and we have no objections.
Okay, thank you. Someone else, yes, sir?
Mike Manning. We're at fifty-five Fatherland Drive. And we're not opposed to the apartment. And, you know, the farm structure is already there. It's not like he's proposing to build a new structure on the site. So we're, we're not opposed. We're in favor of. And Greg and Cindy are, you know, great neighbors and, you know, great, they've been in the community for such a long time, so.
I was curious about how would Greg look into what hardship could fit his situation?
Yeah.
Well, traditionally, a variance has to do not with the size of a lot. It has to do with the. but it has to do with the geography. So, if the property has steep incline and you had a limited space to put a house, say, you could change maybe a setback to be, say, six feet instead of ten feet, or something like that. Or if the property was all wetlands and you only had one place you could put the house and put a septic system. You know, that could be something that would encroach where normally that wouldn't be allowed. It could have to do with the type of soil conditions. Those are the type of things that a variance is originally based on.
Do those, would that meet requirements for him, or is, those are not his, that's not his situation?
Not traditionally. And so, uh, you know, that's why we're saying, we don't know if looking up his deed changes will help or not. But really, there's not much we can do about it tonight.
What I would do with those references is I would want to show them to town council and get an opinion from town council. Because these, these types of variance, I, they get very, very complicated. And if this, everything, if this whole thing predates zoning, it, it may or may not be relief for him. Uh, because if it predates zoning, then you can put anything on that lot that was legal at the time. Legal at the time may not have been two homes on one lot, I, I, I don't know. So, um, you know, again, I would wanna go to town council with the information that we get, but I just want enough of it for her to be able to understand this.
Yeah, I don't understand whereby, I rent, I have an apartment, I rented it out. But if I wanted to change it over, then I could never get it back again, I was told. And I don't think that's right. I think you, you should be able to rent it or keep it for yourself and not have to, you know, it's grandfathered in.
So... You're talking to the wrong people on something like that. You need to talk to the planning board.
You want a non-conforming use, if you don't abandon that use for more than, let's say someone moved out of that apartment and you don't rent it for a year and a half and then you go to rent it. You're still, that's still an apartment, it's still a rentable unit. Uh, let's say it sits for over two years. Now, you may be on a slippery slope, that's a use that you haven't used for two years. Uh, let's say you move your home into, you expand your home into this. You use the whole home now, and it's over two years. And then you come back and say, I want an apartment again. You've taken that step to use it, you didn't preserve it. So, if you preserve it, you can go over the two years if your intent was always to rent it, but I couldn't find a renter, the prices were too high. I mean, there can be a lot of reasons to extend it.
So, the, if you want changes for things like that, it's the planning board? We're not, we're not trying to pass the buck, but, you know, we have no authority for something like that.
Well, I think it's, it wouldn't hurt, because his father, you know, he liked to have him come and live near him.
Oh, sure.
He needs, he, and certainly he's gonna need it.
Well-intentioned.
And it's well-intentioned, you know. And I think that, that on the whole is a reason to give it to him. That it's not just for anybody, it's for his, his father.
This is what the bylaw was written for, this case. Unfortunately, it was written with a large lot. That's all, that's our, that's my only issue with it.
He's ninety-three, how much room does he need?
I, I understand that this...
Oh my god, he's not jogging.
Thank you.
No, I understand. Right. Hey, I understand that this opens up a can of worms, absolutely. I believe this is a can of worms that should be opened. I think there's something, we said I have to, I'm thinking about it, I don't, and I, I'm trying to go through the right channels. Now, no, I don't plan anymore, whatever you want. I went to the building inspector, the building inspector says you make all requirements, but you're not forty thousand square feet, I can't give you a built permit, you gotta go for zoning board of appeals. So, uh, yes, this does open a can of worms. But this is something the town has to look at. They have to decide, are we really hard and fast on this forty thousand square feet? I don't know, I just sat here and listened to all these people at Plum Island that wanna build a bigger house in Plum Island.
Oh my god.
Small lot. Alright, so, yes, they made that decision, they made those changes.
The bylaws, so they could do it. Uh, let me just ask if anybody else would like to speak, because...
Yeah.
Okay, so really, I think your best option is Doug's suggestion. And see what town council has to say, and if it's favorable, come back and see us.
Yeah, and I would say that if your intent on changing the law and this process doesn't look like it's going where you want it to go, you might wanna withdraw without prejudice because there is a cooling off period with a no when you go to zoning. So, that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, I wanna roughly with feathers, I just want everyone to think, just not thinking about it, you know.
Right, so would you like to continue and see if you could get some information that the town council can look at and see if there's any wiggle room for you?
Sure, I'll, I'll look at when the, some of the deeds were, were...
And the definition is state law, chapter forty B, section ten. The definition of variance is all laid out there.
Okay, so I'll give you information on the deeds, or does that come, do I come forward again with that?
Well, I, I would almost suggest that you get it to Doug maybe, or so...
You know where I sit downstairs, why don't you just come in downstairs and get it to me? That way I can get it to town council, hopefully get an answer back for the next hearing and then you're not delayed out a whole nother month, you know.
So, but we would like you to sign a continuance to keep this open.
Yeah.
So, this sign, you need that?
Where it says applicant.
Where it says applicant.
Is this off the larger survey sheet or something?
It, it, it was, it's just I didn't, I didn't wanna have it in the hole.
So, I guess I'm confused on how this became this, or...
Uh, the, the, two different, that, one on your left hand, that is the, from a huge plan called the Fadlin Farm subdivision plan.
Right.
So, that came from a big, huge, oh, fifty sheets worth.
This corner is this corner, right?
Right, right.
So, this is old, and then this is...
No, then, I, both those lots are combined, they, they abut each other. See, on that plan on your right hand, Fadlin Farm Drive did not exist on your right hand.
Oh, this is older.
See there? So now, my house is now at the corner of one cent, one twenty Central Street and fifty-four Fadlin Farm Drive.
Okay, so, I think, in terms of proving a lot and showing the existing conditions, you need your house on this lot with this road and Central Street.
Well, it is, it's two different plans, 'cause that's, you know, that's, but it's two different plans, it's, you know.
Combine, make it one big picture to show that.
Um, yeah.
For the record.
Can I review the continuing statute?
Oh, wait, I was, I was, I lost it right here, I'll figure it out.
I'll show you the zoning map. Here's the zoning map, yeah, it shows Fadlin Farm Drive and one twenty Central.
Right, but what I think we're, we're just saying to prove out to everybody is that you had, you have a lot of parts and pieces, but you don't have a survey site plan that just shows your lot as it exists with the houses on it, with setbacks, with any other items, where the driveway is, or things like that, that would help just make the case for, you know, it's hard to describe this, if someone else comes and takes a look at it, then...
Have you got a recent survey or anything done on your property?
You've got these two pieces out of, you have the big sheet.
Well, Doug, I have the Fadlin Farm sheet. Yeah, I bring the sheet in.
If you can bring it in, I can make a copy of it on the plaque, right?
You thought it was...
I, I do know exactly what you're saying.
Fadlin Farm subdivision is on, is on file.
I know, you, you gotta bring it to us, I'm not gonna go...
Right, right, well, that's why I just, it was hard to bring in one, you know, the whole Fadlin Farm subdivisions and, and then bring in my plot and the one twenty Central Street. Okay, so I'll get those.
Please.
See where you're going with the... Waiter, of course, there are waiters with that.
Well, I did ask them if I was gonna make that.
Exactly where you're going. You just say, oh, you're spoon-feeding people?
Kind of a little bit, yeah, okay.
No.
And, and some people are rather spoon-feeding than others.
Yeah, okay.
Well-intentioned people, that are between a rock and a hard place.
Well, he doesn't have a rock. No, we're on our place, huh? Geography.
Right, okay.
All right, Thomas Moore, one thirty-four Northern Boulevard, Plum Island, Newbury. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section ninety-seven dash four D, part four of Newbury zoning bylaws, as the proposed construction is a change of the pre-existing non-conforming use. Successive maps U zero four dash zero dash one three nine. Do you?
What do you do here?
Tell us what you'd like to do.
Okay. Currently, there is a restaurant, a forty-nine seat restaurant on Melbourne Avenue called Plum Crazy. Uh, what I wish to do is to convert it to a mixed-use residential and commercial kitchen. The commercial kitchen is, the reason for that being is my wife owns two restaurants. We do a tremendous amount of prep and do some catering. So, the purpose of it is to give us some sort of reasonable lifestyle within the time period. And where it's existing, in this kind of situation, it gives us usability of the commercial kitchen to what we need to accomplish at our other businesses, and it gives us a residence. We're looking to convert it to a three-bedroom structure. It's totally open concept, it was before this board in two thousand eight. It was extensive renovation, it's done to a new structure. It's basically a whole open concept. My desire is not to do any structural changes, just to convert it to a living space with a commercial kitchen.
Okay, so is your wife running the commercial kitchen in the property now?
We're not in the rental property yet.
Okay, well, so, so the restaurant's been closed for a long time.
That's right.
And you wanna change it to a mixed use?
Well, basically, it's, it's not to, not to use as a commercial sale of things out of that existing property.
Right, right, exactly.
But if you prepare anything in a restaurant, you have to have basically board health approval and commercial use equipment to do it. And we do a lot of prep, we do a lot of prep. We have two restaurants, one in Peterborough, one in Bradford, Mass, perfect lunch. But we do a lot of homely breads, things like that. We're at four o'clock in the morning sometimes, so we're just trying to get some sort of reasonable lifestyle for what we do.
But I, I think the answer is yes, you're gonna have a commercial use and you're gonna have a residential use, so you will be a mixed-use property.
It is a mixed use, and that's why I described it as such. You know, as far as the impact on the neighborhood and what it's currently going, we have a building that's been in existence since nineteen forty-six. There are no changes to the outside or any of the, the land itself. As far as the impact on the neighborhood, I think it would be considered less than a forty-nine seat restaurant. Basically, it's a living space and a car could come in to pick up something. So, that's the basic, and I, I included a package there, basically, is it previous existing and proposed.
The thing is, your narrative says forty-nine seat. I get thirty-four and thirty-nine, and I numbered every seat. I even gave you permission for the couches and everything else if they're sitting over there reading the newspaper and having a muffin. But I couldn't get to thirty, I couldn't get to forty-nine. And I don't know that it really matters, it may only matter when you go to Newbury Court for your flows for this building. Have you had any conversation with them yet to see? Yes, water and sewer problem?
They just said the other thing I did because of the additional bathroom. And I, I drew this because this was the original bathroom.
Yeah.
And, and the new, uh, the, the existing one has the bathroom over here.
Yeah.
My desire is to simply reactivate that as a second bathroom. Uh, the, the plumb is all turned around, it's just a question of reactivating it. And, and went to them and the only thing, they were fine with it, the only sugge, I can't keep your names, but I just reached them there. And their suggestion was to be an additional price of sixty dollar charge for this, for the second bathroom. So, they were fine with the...
They're gonna charge you for about...
For one use, I don't know, whatever, I don't know what kind of structure you get. Whereas a commercial structure, it was obviously charged differently.
Okay, alright, yeah, it was.
So, they were saying, because if I have a second bathroom, it'll be a six hundred dollar additional charge. I don't know if that's genuine, you just, one time, whatever.
That's there, I guess that's...
But I have had a discussion, yes.
Okay.
Sounds the first person, in fact, Mr. Justin suggested they stop doing companies in the US.
Work that, work that, okay, alright. Uh, the other thing, uh, I think in your narrative, it suggested that you may end up putting something over the doorway here, a two or four-foot extension?
Well, I noticed on the original pictures, they had a, a two-foot overhang, and really just getting out of a car, you're not having a trouble.
And I fully get it, the trouble is now, is even if this board gives you relief from that overhang relative to lot coverage, um, you won't get it in conservation. Um, you're already too high, we're gonna consider that part of your lot coverage and you've already blown right through the door when it comes to lot coverage.
I know, it's thirty-five.
Yeah, you're way up there.
Uh, it's not a deal breaker for me, so that's fine.
Okay. The other thing you mentioned is some fencing, out front privacy fencing. You're already, you look like you're as close to twenty feet to the street as you can get.
I'll tell you what my thought process is there, and, um, right now, there are curbs four feet from the actual building. There's a little strip of, of grass. One of my purposes to build there is I have three grandchildren that be visiting, and that's a busy street. And I simply want basically a device so they could run out the door and run into the park and run up the street.
And, and I'm gonna...
In conservation, I would imagine.
Uh, yeah, conservation for fencing, we're relatively loose about it as long as you give us a fifty percent open. But, um, relative to zoning and putting fences in, if you're within twenty feet of your street line, you have to make sure that you're not blocking any sightlines. Usually that fencing comes down low and gets skeletonized out near the street, so people can see through it. If it's tight to the building, uh, then you might, you might get away with it with the building inspector.
I would, I think it would be more than four feet.
Okay, that, that, that may work. Um, you're gonna, now you're gonna start to cater out of this, and you're gonna be up at four in the morning, and I'm wondering what the impact of the neighborhood's gonna be, and to make sure that this is gonna be less detrimental than having someone show up at eight or nine o'clock for breakfast.
First of all, I would say that, first of all, one of the reasons I'm doing this is so I will not be up until four o'clock in the morning because against the prep thing, these are the things you can home and night throw it in the oven and, you know, use it and take it to the rest of the morning. We do, we make our own breads and that, that type of thing, muffins, et cetera. It's gonna be that type of impact, you know, you know, if there's a Super Bowl game and somebody calls me up and says, you know, I need fifty sandwiches, we'll just sort of home make them and that's it. Uh, it's not really a push for a commercial operation as a caterers in that...
You have help there, is it just you and your wife?
No, I can't.
You're just, alright, and how do you transport this stuff? You just pull a truck up and load it and off you go? Your car?
Yeah, and, you know, you have to meet all the health regulations anyway, so it has to be transported properly and...
There was no mention, there's no real plan though that narrates that in here, so that's why all the questions.
I was letting you do all the talking, you got almost everything.
I'm almost at your point, I'm not done yet, but I may be getting your points, so...
I think we need a site plan that's not this and not this, but shows a survey site plan and locates the building, it locates the paving, it locates the parking spaces, so that we understand that.
Okay.
And if you have a commercial kitchen, you have a commercial kitchen, and we understand what you're saying and what you're doing, but we also wanna make sure that it's properly set up so that if it should advance, that everything that you've set up can, can happen. So, if you have a commercial kitchen, are you gonna have exits off the side of the building so that if you were to hire staff, they wouldn't have to enter your house at four in the morning?
We're not hiring staff. We're not carrying it to that point. This is more of us for our own convenience.
So, I mean, that, that's, and where, where is that one loading zone spot? I mean, you have a non-conforming use, which is commercial, you're improving it to a dwelling, but you still are keeping a small piece of non-conforming use, so it's going in the right direction. But you still have to provide the requirements for the use.
The intensity of the use.
Intensity of the use, so...
The intensity's really more than that.
But, you know, they take off...
It's gonna be more than what you're doing now, though.
Right, understood, but, you know, things improve and all of a sudden...
Thank you, I agree.
Patriots getting another Super Bowl and another one, and you start making more and more sandwiches, you start hiring somebody, then they're...
You guys need takeout, or?
I don't, then the next person's coming along and...
The only other thing I noticed too when I was doing this is you don't own this yet, and I didn't see anything in here conveying permission to represent this project from Curt Littlefield. Do we have that?
Well, I do have is the addendum to, uh, the purchase and sale agreement. That's as continued to require our approval.
Okay.
If you're my brother, I can have that sent over.
I think we should have a copy, I've given you permission to be here and discuss it, so...
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay.
And, um, it'd be great if there was some elevation in the building just to prove out what the height is. So, in terms of going down the P I O D checklist of dimensional criteria...
I did take a reading from the inside, I did not, I was not on the roof, but I, it was from bottom to peak, it was fourteen feet.
But it would be good to have that stated and documented.
I do have it stated, isn't it?
So you're probably fifteen outside, you went to the underside of the rafters.
I didn't see it in review, but it... I mean, I think that's the point, if, if this is certain use and it's becoming less detrimental and it proves out to me this, 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 and this, that's what we're, that's the criteria of what we're checking against. So, you know, if you're removing parking spaces, if you're defining the loading zone for the quote "commercial kitchen" and the use, if we understand...
Just for the, I think it might be commercial kitchen on the, the exit, yeah.
Tom, I don't see the height in here either actually. You may have, it'd be in a, you may have written it, but I don't see it in the drawing.
Maybe it's a narrative or something.
Yeah, I've got a roof line.
I'm quite understand.
And it's as simple as providing some estate, that's all, so it's not a big...
The driveway and the seating.
Are there differences needed for the commercial and residential space or not? Or egresses?
What's that I would bring up?
Oh, all right.
The egress is there, already, on the side.
I'm sorry?
The egress is there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know there's an egress, but it doesn't meet the requirements of the WCO law.
What I think we need is a better plan.
Yeah, you're somewhere between this and something that's dimensioned would be, it's, it's, it's kinda sort of, it's diagrammatic, you need a better plan to represent what you're doing so that we, we can say that it's suggestive, but it's not totally there.
We need, we need to know, you know, a little more detail on what's going on here.
Well, and I see where you were getting at too, so you, you come out here, you got a doorway here, 'cause the street's out here. You've got a doorway here out through the commercial kitchen.
There's another one here.
There's another one there, okay, all right, I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
But it's gotta be shown.
Yeah, they need to be shown, we shouldn't have...
On a site plan so that it's all relative to neighbors and sizes and setbacks and heights and, and then it's, then it's understandable. I mean, you did a great job organizing and presenting it nicely, but you just, the documentation needs to be improved in order to visually document it.
Site plan elevation?
Yep. And I think the site plan is, is a key, key component to making sure that it lists the setbacks and it shows all the existing features of the site. Because what you're proposing to us is that you're basically improving the use, right?
And just, I do have a copy of the deed in there and it's basically a seventy by seventy by seventy-seven. If you've got fifty feet here and thirty foot by eight back there, you've got twenty-two in the front, ten in the back, ten on the side. We need to see, we have to see.
Lot of plan.
Okay, got it, got it.
Some other person walks in off the street and says, "I don't get what's going on" and they look at me and ask me to explain it and I look at this and I go, "If I explain it?" No, I don't want them to trust me, I want you to prove it to me, is what I want you to do, what I ever want to do.
But are there any objections or any concerns?
Just, you know, making sure...
Well, well, we wanna make sure for safety, I guess, on the commercial end of it.
Yeah, and the, you know, and then that plan will help you also with conservation in terms of exactly what you're doing and fencing and sight lines. It is on a corner street, it is on a busy street, there is a sidewalk, all that, all right?
Yeah, but this is fine, guiding the safety, I do discuss this with Mr. Jocelyn and his concern was the firewall. This is a concrete brick building and the interior walls at the kitchen are all concrete and anything that would be put in there would be to have a two-hour fire rate.
And we need a designated parking?
Designated.
Designated parking.
We need a loading zone.
Yeah, I think on this sketch here, you got it, this is from the one that was presented to you back in two thousand eight. You wouldn't need more than that?
That's existing, so what's your proposed?
Oh, okay.
And it's labeled loading zone, residence space.
All right, so this is a continuance?
Yes, I agree.
We need to sign?
We need some information.
Okay, great, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The rest of the board, you're ready?
Did we ask if anybody would like to speak about the project?
I don't think we did.
I have two favors up ahead, yeah, okay. Anybody would like to speak in favor or in opposition or questions?
For the record, I'm Barrett Gavro and I'm a butter, I don't have any questions right now, but I'd like to know what the continuance is.
Okay, we are in May...
May eighteenth.
How many?
May eighteen more.
May eighteenth here, seven thirty start.
It won't be published again in the paper?
And I won't get any certified letter?
No, not again, no, so it'll be May eighteenth at seven thirty. Are you good?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Was there somebody else too, did anybody else want to speak on the project?
No.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can make mail service, it's so slow.
So you may send it.
No, it's about across time, I would say.
What's the last name again?
I need it.
Do you want these in your commercial, like not hand drawn, you're on a...
And again, for me, you know, I think that we need, you heard from this end of the table, site plan and something definitive on something, with some dimensions that show the actual building.
But that seems like a ridiculous amount of time to waste. And you're, you're...
No.
We didn't even own the property yet, so...
Well, I, I, I understand that. But anyway. He wants a decision from the zoning board. Saying that he's got these things and again, we need to be able to take this file and pass it to that guy in the other room over there that didn't hear any of this and be able to make sense of it. And you really can't right now. You know, my peeve with this thing right now is the commercial use and a plan of use for the commercial use and then we can determine whether its intensity is appropriate and, and then we can either set limits on it, approve it as it is, ask for modifications to get it to where we feel as though it's not substantially more detrimental than what is existing now.
So, the only thing I don't understand about that comment, and this is just kind of an aside, is it would be a restaurant, it would be a restaurant with cars, breakfast, lunch, dinner potentially with traffic and I don't understand how catering is any more detrimental.
So this could be catering, I worked for Cato when I was in high school and I used to show up at seven o'clock at night and we used to go over and we'd cater a prom over somewhere in Amesbury and we'd get back at ten-thirty and we'd be moving dishes in, we'd be everything and, you know, we were in the middle of nowhere.
You could say the same thing, I mean, they could, they could prep at three, four in the morning to open for breakfast.
You could say that, but I don't...
And you could close at eleven, twelve at night, I used to dishwash and I'd be leaving there at one AM.
Is that what happened at this facility?
I don't know what they did.
Oh, right, then we don't, then we don't know if it's an intensity of use yet, do we?
But that answers why it makes any difference, that's just, I mean, I'm just trying to understand why it makes any difference.
Because you're asking...
Because you're on Plum Island.
I know, but it...
It's really what it is.
You're asking to change a nonconforming use.
Right.
And you're asking us to find that what you're presenting is not substantially more detrimental. Without the information, we don't know that. You can sit there and you can say to me, and I, I take you for face value, you know, that you're saying that these things are not going to perfect. Show me, put them on face.
So he just came in and I'm not being facetious and I'm just saying, if he said, "I'm just gonna make peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to put on a food truck and then it takes me two hours on a five to six PM basis," then that's what you're looking for?
Yes, because then, then if he's down there, they can peanut butter and fluff and he's doing it at ten at night, we can send, someone can call the police, the police will go down, they'll note it, they can talk to the zoning codes enforcement officer and then he can go down and either bring the guy into compliance or say, you know, something, "You misrepresented your project at the zoning board of appeals, we're gonna shut this commercial kitchen down until you can make it right." So, so then we, then we have something that we can do.
So that's really risky then, because now you're saying it has to be so far defined that he might not get into trouble eventually.
Well, it's gonna have to be defined to a business license, it's gonna have to be defined to a waterhouse.
No, I know, what I'm just using is his example, like he, so he has to...
Well, I think that right now you're trying to mince words with me and that's really not where I'm trying to go with you.
I'm trying to understand what's...
What are you saying is that the fluff and the peanut butter is great, but all of a sudden the roach coach shows up and it's running at midnight or all through the night and that wasn't part of the deal because, and it's parked out in front of somebody else's house because there was no parking space, loading space provided on the lot. And all we wanna do is see it on a plan so everybody knows where the potential it would go, that it's on the right side of the building, it's on the left side of the building, it's on the street corner.
Yeah, I understand your part, I'm just trying to get back to your part, like how, how, I just try to understand, like how specifically does he have to define the business? Because I'm just worried now, if you say he says peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and he ends up making...
I'm not talking about the, I'm talking about his impact to the outside into the neighbors.
Okay.
What if his hours of operation go to bed?
Okay, that's what I'm asking, okay.
Yeah, what if his hours of operation go to bed?
Okay.
How many people are gonna be working there? How many trucks?
Because he doesn't, I don't think he went away knowing what you're asking for specifically, so that's why I'm asking, so that he should have asked. So we don't actually keep going through this?
Are you the real estate agent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. I've seen you before.
So I just know, that's why I took all the notes. So I wanna just be sure, so we don't keep wasting your time either. I don't wanna have continuance after continuance.
The best, yes, and you, you might have to go out and hire a surveyor to do a land survey and plan. To do it, because the man drawing, this is going on the property.
Yeah.
And if you submit this and it gets stapled to his deed and he wants to sell it in two years and someone pulls up the deed and says...
Because it is going to become part of the decision, so we need something firmly drawn that the board can say, "Okay, I understand this."
You and he need to make the argument to us. We shouldn't be fishing, making your argument. We present it first.
Well, I wish that, the only thing was I just wanted him to understand that, you know, he needs to be more professional in his...
Yeah, it's, it's nice that it was in the binder, but, but, but the, the level of, you know, subplots like that just don't do anything.
I know. Okay, thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I get it, thanks.
Can I take a motion to close the meeting?
I'll close the meeting.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?